Now that you're here.
We'll call to order the special meeting in Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Monday, August 26, 2013, at 5:30 PM. We'll call, please.
Director Fletcher?
Here.
Director Hunt?
Here.
President Corleone?
Here.
Director Kellaw?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Okay, public participation. Individuals be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not on the scheduled agenda, although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody from the public here tonight that would like to address the board? No? Okay. Moving on. Bold business. 2013-14 budget. Who's gonna start us off?
I will start us off. If you guys can turn, well, you can see it on your screens, but this is basically the budget overview. This shows what happened as of last year and where the budget's going forward this year. So what I'll do is just walk through the major categories of the budget. This gives everybody kind of an overview of what we're looking at, and every one of these items has detail behind it, and we can dig into the detail as needed, but this is basically what the budget's looking like. So, first line is water sales, and you'll see that we're budgeting $250,000 more of water sales this year than we had in last year. That's our quantity amount, our quantity, like, consumption amount, not the dollar amount, but the water consumed amount, has not changed. But, as everybody remembers, we did put, there will be a rate increase that will hit, we have a rate increase that hit mid-year last year, and we're gonna have another rate increase that hits mid-year this year. The net effect of that is 4%. So that's a 4% increase in water sales that we are budgeting.
Is there another increase coming, or is that the last?
January 1st.
4% again?
Yes.
So when did, you said mid-year?
Yeah, so...
Mid fiscal year.
Mid fiscal year.
Oh, so it's January.
January's mid-year, mid-fiscal year, because this budget is 630 to 71.
Why do they come up with that fiscal year thing? To confuse us, I guess.
Outside water sales is about the same. The other income, that includes reimbursements that we get, that includes outside custom work that we do, and you can tell that it was up last year. That's because we got a big reimbursement back from JPIA for multiple years of health insurance that we paid, or property, property insurance.
Property and workers' comp.
Yeah, property and workers' comp that we got a big refund on. You can't put that against the current year expense, because it's for multiple years of expenses, so you just put that in income this year. That's why it's up this year. So, we're budgeting 176 this year. Interest, $75,000. I think we'll be able to meet that budget this year. Taxes is always a constant at 240,000. We never budget fair market loss or gain, who knows what that's going to be? That's just based on the market. Income and assessment, PID reserve, $190,000. Again, that's that.
How can you increase? It says gain-loss, actual 10,000, and then you've got 10,000 plus, but then you have a minus 100%. Shouldn't that be a plus 100%?
It's, it's just, it should be a zero, is what it is. You're just not comparing, you're comparing it to zero. So that's why you're receiving that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not a minus 100%, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, that's a negative.
Negative income.
Negative income, so it's a loss.
Oh, last year's was negative, or this year's is negative, and next year's you're putting it positive, so...
No, we're putting it zero.
We're putting it at zero.
Zero. Okay, now I got out the right columns here. I was looking at the wrong columns. Changes is what I was looking at.
We don't budget anything in that account, just because you'd never know what the market's gonna do.
What causes?
Fair market loss. It's market fluctuation, so even though you don't sell your commodity that you have, you must recognize gain-loss based on accounting principles.
When do you do that?
Every month.
Month.
Pardon me.
Yeah, so even though you don't sell...
Do you own any gold?
It's called, it's basically like unrealized gain-loss. It's, that's what you, you actually have to, to book that, and not like in a tax position where you would only book the realized gain-loss.
Right.
Income and assessment from PID reserve, that's the property tax portion that we get, that's based on that Davis Grinsky loan. Grant revenue, we are budgeting $235,000. This is the remaining portion of the Billy and the Skyway projects that we shall, we hope to receive in this current fiscal year. We did receive 197 last year.
We're not gonna receive any other grants this year?
The, we have some wildfire grants that we...
What about the dock?
Those are their grants, I think.
But we get reimbursed for the dollar amounts, so...
How about the dock?
That's four or five years out.
Oh.
There is no budget on that. The dollar surcharge for capital projects, that's just a flat amount that we receive every month on the bills. Income by a fish, we always budget $8,000. We meet that almost every year, close to it. We didn't meet it this year, but we've met it almost every year, close to it. Income and capacity fees, last year was $72,000, but it was based on that large project over, off of, what's that, what's that big?
In the bowling alley.
The valley?
Paradise.
Paradise Community Village.
Yes. That was, that was the lumps, big lump sum of that, of that capacity. So what we do is we budget 25,000 this year, again, which we budgeted last year, just looking at the, kind of, the housing market and not looking like it's gonna be a huge developing year again. And then revenue from PFD, which is a pass-through, we always budget 120,000. It's always just a little bit over, but that's just a flat amount that we receive through the bills.
How about, we're getting a lot of new buildings in town, aren't we?
Um, we got commercial...
They already have water?
Building-wise, no.
O'Reilly's and Dollar Store.
I won't need a big meter.
Well, I thought there was Wendy's coming in, and there's a, that...
Yeah, we don't know when those are gonna be...
Wendy's has been coming to Paradise for the past 15 years, so...
And if we get five, let's say we get five new buildings, then we meet our budget. So, I mean...
Just five. But what about houses?
I mean, all...
How much is a house?
It's all about the...
Forty-five hundred and...
About the same?
Yeah.
But if they have a meter that's adequate, then there's no...
Correct.
Nothing, yeah.
Nothing to hook onto that meter.
So, from an operational standpoint, we're showing that we're gonna be, our operational expenses will be a little bit down this year, based on the assumption that we made that George will go through when it comes to personnel expenses, that we have in the budget two frozen utility, one workers. And that savings is about $132,000 in annual savings, and so that's the bulk of that decrease in, in the operational expenses, savings. The other thing, too, is you can see that there was a shift of, we, our pipeline expenses were quite, were down this year, just due to the fact that we didn't put a lot of pipe into the ground, and a lot of the work that was done on the pipelines was actually capital expenses associated with the Billy Road and the Skyway project, because we did a lot of the services ourselves. So those were, were taken out of operations and put into capital, and so we're showing kind of a, not a full pipeline project year, but, you know, nice, a nice size one. But, again, that, those...
We put in 900 feet of pipeline this year, right? 90 or 90?
90.
90 feet of pipe.
So far...
So we get 462,000.
462,000 of expenses. A lot of those expenses are, there's some that are associated, any type of capital expenses that are associated with the pipe, or the corporation yard are put into this...
Pipeline.
Put into this pipeline category.
The majority of that was the services on Billy and the services and tie-in work on Skyway. That was all...
Working on the pipeline.
So those are existing...
No, it goes to pipeline.
I thought, we're not keeping the books separate on what we're putting in the corp yard, then?
Not in budgeting purposes, because it's, it's...
Are we gonna be able to have a separate report?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We pull them out for, for, when we book the asset, under the fixed asset portion, we pull all that out and we capitalize that in there. So if you wanted to get a full capitalized asset portion, then that's the way we do it. But from a budgeting standpoint, we always just kind of lump it into the pipeline, or it's kind of Department 70, because it just makes...
Well, then, you've done some pipeline, but most of the work was not pipeline.
And the other stuff is the corporation yard, so any type of...
But the corporation yard was concrete and, and, you know...
But this is just a budget number, it's not the reported number. He'll give you the reported number.
Yes.
That the corporation yards was X, and the pipeline was X.
Because we, we've never budgeted, and, and, just to remind you, we haven't budgeted our own labor inside of the corporation yard.
The same thing happened here, because I tried to get the closing costs a couple of times, and it was never budgeted. So I said, "Well, how's it compared to the budget?", and you'd tell me, "Well, we didn't have it in the budget."
Yeah, the, the labor was never budgeted inside there. But we, for the corporation yard, we have an outside budget that we are taking in that into consideration.
And you're taking the labor in this time?
We track it, for sure, yeah.
And it's all tracked, and we have it, we have it segregated.
Okay, because we, we didn't track it here, so I never could find it out.
Well, we, we track the labor here, but we never budgeted the labor here, so there's...
Does that mean I could actually get a report on what it cost us to remodel this and everything?
Yeah, and I, actually, I've sent you that report, but just remember that I sent you the report that had the actuals, but there was, but I said, "There was never a budget established..."
So we didn't know if we went over the budget or under the budget?
For labor.
Only on the purchase of materials. It was a materials-only budget for this, this...
Okay, I, I just wanted to, wondered if we had a budget overall for these, both of these, because they're unusual one-time affairs, and...
In the corporation yard case, we have a budget, because we had the engineers give us line item, engineer's estimate expenses for all of that. We had an original budget estimated for the building also, so we have a budget that includes labor for that, that we're comparing against.
Okay, so that, when you find, when it's done, you can give us a report compared with the budget on the corp yard?
Yeah, and me and Jim right now are actually finalizing a month-by-month budget that we can present to you guys.
Oh, good, okay.
In fact, we're using inside labor as opposed to outside labor, we have to be doing better on labor.
Just, but just remember, outside labor, or the inside labor was already encumbered. So it's a cash flow standpoint that we always, so, you know, if, if we do a calculation and our labor is more expensive than what it would have been done on the outside, that are, the decision, the driving decision to use inside labor was a cash flow standpoint first and foremost, and then maybe a savings on the second standpoint. Because, if you remember, we, we were driving, if we decided to put this labor on top, then our cash was gonna be depleted down even further than what it is currently.
I can use that Clark Road as an example. Two months ago, you saw bids, a bid for $70,000 to do that intersection work at Clark Road. If we had went ahead with the contractor, that would have been $70,000 out of our checking account to pay for that project. But we did ourselves, and so you're probably looking at $10,000 worth of material, maybe 20 tops. So we saved $50,000 of cash, but when you wrap in all our labor, it's gonna be somewhere in between then.
Yeah, but that labor would have been here.
It's not out of pocket.
If we'd have gone out to bid for the 70,000, that labor would have still been here.
Yep.
Yeah, the labor's already encumbered.
They may have been doing something else that's productive, but...
Yeah, you're losing an opportunity based on where you're placing that labor, but you're also saving cash flow, because that labor's already encumbered.
Well, I know one time, George, in fact, the last time that you and I walked up there, I didn't ask for anything, but you told me, you figured that we had saved about half a million dollars.
That's our guess right now.
Just, just a guess, and you said you were gonna have them work on it, but...
Kevin, thank you for finally using the word "opportunity cost", because that's, we truly have it, and it seemed to be ignored, is that that's the loss where we could have done something else with that labor or input in the business here. So it's called "opportunity cost" whenever you direct your employees away from their steady jobs that they have, and you move them off onto a special project.
Okay. Thank you. That's exactly right. Yeah, and, go ahead.
A question about the PFD revenue.
Uh-huh.
What is that?
That's the money that we collect on our bills for...
Our bills?
Yeah.
It's a tax?
It's a, it's a fee.
It's a fee for fire hydrants?
Yeah, and so what we do is, we, it's a...
What do we charge?
It's a dollar a month.
Per meter.
Per meter. And we take, we take that, and we take that money and we segregate it into a different account.
Reserved funds?
We're collecting that on behalf of the Town of Paradise.
Yeah, those aren't even our monies.
Right, so those are, those are reserved funds?
Correct, yes.
Restricted, is what I mean to say.
Restricted reserve funds.
Okay, and just because we collect 124, 584, or whatever number we collected, doesn't mean that we spend that, because we get the direction from the fire department about projects.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've only, we only spent 67, 618.
Yeah, I saw that, and I was, at first I thought it was just like a pass-through. It is a pass-through ultimately, but it doesn't have to balance.
That's correct, yeah. Because they, they run a balance.
I see a fund.
They run a balance, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And we charge them to take care of it?
Yep.
And we don't pay interest on the, how much balance?
We give them interest.
We do give them interest? At what rate?
0.4%.
Whatever our average is.
Point four?
Could've said like 9.5, you know?
Point four?
Really freaked me out.
We pay them interest, huh?
We, we pay them interest on that money that we have.
And what do we get out of it?
What's our annual, or our monthly service cost? Cost? $700. We charge them 700.
But what is our, we're getting interest on that money, too. What do we get?
0.4.
The same, oh, okay, so we're breaking even. We're not losing money, okay. I didn't know we were paying them interest.
And then there's debt service, and that debt service includes a estimated 515, $521,000 of new debt, which is the assumed debt that would be required to complete the water recycle project, based on the budget that we have in the budget. So, what we've done is we've budgeted $8 million for the project. We took out 1.5 million of that, based on our capacity fees, spent down, and then the remaining portion, we assumed financing over 20 years at 5%. That is the debt service of $521,000 that we had budgeted for in, in this budget. We have not done that. Nothing's been spent, nothing's been obligated, but that's what...
Could happen.
The, that's what the finance committee has decided that they would like to show inside the budget, based on it happening this year.
Yeah, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you have to do it.
No.
It's just that it's there, so you can do it if it's, if it's available.
That's correct. And it's...
I like your explanation, Larry.
So that's why that debt service has gone up to what it is, to the, it went up 545. That's just based on different payment schedules. So 21,000 of that is just different payment schedules of how things are paid out. The remaining of that is that new debt service that we have estimated. Save a can, we just, it's pass-through on spending and receiving, and same with the PFD account. So if you go...
What do we have to keep anyone from moving money from one budget to another?
Say that again?
What, what facility, what safeguards do we have to keep...
The board.
Somebody other than the board from moving money from one budget to another?
Just have the door open.
And we have our...
I mean, could, there's no way you guys could do it, could you? Not without approval. So there must be a safeguard.
Not without us approving it.
Yeah.
If, if we didn't approve it, it would be completely illegal.
Right.
Right, I know that.
For either one of those guys.
And that's why I'm asking, what safeguards do we have?
That's, that's an audit procedure that's done every year, when, when you get your audits done, is that the budgets, the budgets are adhered to?
They check it with the audit, okay. Because there's been, when, when I was on the council, that was the, the thing they were saying, that people were always moving money from one place to another, and then they'd say, "Oh, it's in the budget."
I saw that budget, how'd you ever make sense of it?
They didn't want us to make sense of it.
No, I, I gather that, that was a, when I ran for town council, I got a copy of it.
If the town, if they were doing that, anybody hired by this town was doing that without the council's approval, it was completely illegal.
Yeah, but a lot of things get done, a lot of things get done illegally, unfortunately.
Well, then, nobody brought them up to task.
Not here, though.
That's right.
No, we have a very simple, easy-to-understand budget system.
While we broke into that, I know, I had to go back, I couldn't remember the figures off the top of my head after I evaluated a lot of, well, anyway, we, in that fire department fund, we have, I have down here $397,000.
That's correct.
And all expenditures, expenses must be approved by the Paradise Fire Department.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's no problem with that.
Yeah.
So we, that can stay in there until there's something come up and they do it. Now, do we approve, do we replace 12, there's something that I read in here, 12 meters a year, not 12 fire hydrants or 20 hydrants?
That's only budget.
Oh, I see, okay, good.
But keep in mind, there's a secondary purpose that's been approved, and that is pipelines in wildfire urban interface zones.
Yeah.
And those are 50/50 projects.
Okay.
And we have a list of those that we've already approved with the town.
Yeah, good.
That Jensen Court Feather River Place.
That's one of them.
Yeah, so we have one, one of those projects is budgeted this year to, to take place, which is a 50/50 project. It's the Jensen Court Feather River Place.
Okay.
And we have $126,000 budgeted, and then, so in that other revenue, we have custom work, and that, 50% of that would go back into that, into our revenue.
That's the cross-country jaunt between the end of Feather River and Jensen up at the top of my road. Yeah, okay.
And that's a 50/50 project, that we would be receiving half that money out of that PFD account, the other half would come out of our account.
Out of our account.
Yeah.
Okay, it's still basically our money, even though that's restricted in the PFD...
No, it's not our money.
Not our money.
It's not our money at all.
I realize that that dollar a month per meter is their money.
It's their money.
We're drawing it for them.
But we, but we do a lot of the work associated with that money, so...
But they approved to take, for us to match that fund for this project.
Right, exactly.
They approve everything.
Yeah.
Even when we need to put a hydrant in, we get approval before that hydrant goes in.
Yeah.
But when we put the hydrant in, we charge them our labor.
They approve the replacement of that hydrant.
Right.
Well, that keeps it above board.
See, when this was first set up, half the fire hydrants in town didn't work.
Right, I remember them talking about that.
That's why we did it.
I remember them talking about that.
The guy who was the mayor the year that was put into, I know him very well.
Does he like to wear red baseball caps?
Well, I can remember, I can remember talking to, in fact, he's a good friend of mine, he retired from the fire department, had her, they pulled up here and had the hose hooked onto a fire hydrant, and they turned it on, and there was nothing come out. You know, it wasn't off in the ground either.
Embarrassing.
Very embarrassing. That wouldn't happen anymore, we don't think.
We hope it wouldn't.
We hope it doesn't, yeah.
Considering the liability involved, I'm glad it doesn't.
So, the next line that I want you to look at is the increase-decrease in cash before debt proceeds and capital. This is basically our net income after operations. This is the money that we have left over, that we now have some...
120,000, right?
That's correct. We have some options, we have, you have the ability to, to make decisions based on, on the end, end result of this money. Then you have debt proceeds, those are the proceeds that we had received through the borrowing for that pipeline project, or for that recycle project. And then you have a capital improvement program of 9.1 million dollars. Just remember, 8 million of that is that recycle project that we have budgeted this year that...
Yeah, how much is borrowed of that?
6.5 million.
6.5?
Yeah.
Cash available for project, capital projects, that 6.5 is borrowed?
If you look above that, cash available for capital projects, that 6.5, that's our borrowing.
Okay, so...
Debt proceeds.
Okay, but 6.5 of that is, okay, and you put the 129,000, debt proceeds 16, okay, now I see.
Yep.
Okay, just had to look at it twice.
Let me ask, oh, here, okay, that 129,000, go up the next figure, is 7,521. That 129 million is...
129,000.
129,300. It's what's left over, when you deduct our expenses from our income.
That's correct.
From the revenue.
That's all we have, really, that's not committed to spend.
That's correct.
129,000.
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day.
Okay. Yep. And so, then your capital project is 9.1 million, which you have an increase-decrease in cash of 2.5 million, but also I want to let you know that 1.5 of that is capacity fees. It's that capacity fee reserve, that's restricted reserve, that we've been holding on to. So the net effect to unrestricted reserves is a million dollars for this current budget. That includes the recycle project, so...
Now, the beginning cash balance that's underneath that 4 million, that's in reserve funds, or stuff we can't touch, or what?
A portion of that is, so to get a better idea of what's in reserve and what's restricted, that's moved to the long-term, five-year long-term projection, that's right there.
Page 16?
Page 16. And if, what the column you want to look at is that kind of skin-colored column there.
214 budget.
Yep.
Okay.
And if you look at the very bottom, you have, and look at the beginning cash balance, and the beginning cash balance you'll see is 4.79 million, right about...
Where?
Oh, right there.
Look at your screen if you need a pointer.
3.7?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, that's our beginning balance.
Oh, okay.
Of all of our cash, but if you look down, that's what's gonna be remaining in there after this year's budget. Those are your unrestricted reserves. So your unrestricted reserves after this year's budget would be 783,000 dollars. That's what we would have at the end of the day to play with. The restricted reserves would be the five point, one point five million dollars below that. Now, remember, I have a negative fourteen, just based on how my math went, in capacity fees. Meaning, we drained our capacity fees for that other project.
Looks like you more than drained them.
We more than drained, exactly.
Make sure we zeroed it out.
Just because you used a round number, is that why?
Yeah, yeah. And, and if you look, the next year it's going to go up because we, we're going to continue collecting, so it's going to go to ten thousand. So that's, that's the reason why I did what I did. What'd you say?
You've got just a few thousand dollars anticipated. We had seventy-two the last time. The one time I talked to you, we had fifty-two.
Right.
So we picked up another twenty, and it must have been off of additional buildings or the bowling alley property.
That was this year's.
That's where the fifty-two came from.
That's right, yes, yeah.
So we had twenty come in from someplace else because there's seventy-two in there.
Yeah, we had a, we had.
We had a few.
Yeah, we had a few, few other ones, yeah. And then you have that one point five million, which is the restricted, that includes the PFD account. It includes our restricted reserve for debt service account, those restricted amounts. So, but the number you want to look at is that seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. Those are the monies, at the end of the day, that you guys have control over spending at, for the next budget.
So what we really want to look at is the, the, follow that line across, the gray, the green, the pink, and the purple. Without a rate increase, we can really see where we're going to be at.
And, and assuming too, on the next page, that all the long-term capital projects that we have assumed are going to be done too. So you look at the next page and you have this year's budget of nine million. Well, next year, we're planning on spending another one point two million dollars of long-term capital. And then the next year, we're planning on spending another one point one million dollars of capital. Those are things that either we have to do, which are going to require a rate increase, or you don't do one, and you don't do a rate increase.
But what you're also not taking into account, for example, is that of the B reservoir storage plan, we're going to borrow five hundred thousand dollars of that six hundred thousand dollar expense.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. That's not, I mean, but we're not, we're not guaranteed that.
We're not taking that budget yet.
That's right.
When, what, when do we pay off a debt?
We pay off a debt in two thousand and fourteen, but if you remember, when we did the borrowing for the meter project, we lowered our debt for the first five years, and then it increased in the next fifteen years. So, that five years is running up, but also, we're paying off a debt, but we're also going to increase. So the net, net effect of that debt, debt payment's about two hundred thousand dollar savings.
Plus, didn't we defer payment on the software too?
No, we paid for that upfront.
Oh, I thought there was something to.
There was, and then, and then by the, when, when we got the deal we did, they took that off the table.
Oh, oh, they took it off?
Yeah.
What'd they give up to take that off?
They gave up a hundred thousand dollars of their original bid.
And how much was the deferred?
The deferment was three years. But it was.
How much?
It was a three-year, no-interest payment. So basically, whereas no def, it was deferral of only a third, a third of the payment.
With interest rates now, it was, didn't amount to much.
Didn't amount to.
Yeah, we could have spread the payments out, but I'd rather take a hundred thousand dollars off the cost than.
Better, you know.
Than.
Discount.
Yeah.
That was that, when we capitalized, those, for that three years, that's up.
No, that was, that was the refinance. He was talking about a different one. But that refinance is the one that's going to drop off next year, and then that's.
Three-year refi.
That's correct. And we refinanced that two thousand and one bond for, for a three-year portion at one point three percent. That's going to fall off, but then that debt from that meter project's going to increase.
The guy who gave us that money, has he got any more? At that interest rate?
That, that was through Rick Brandy's, and so, he fought hard for that one. He was surprised to come back with that one. He, I mean, but the bond market's actually weird right now. I mean, there's not a lot of smoking rates out there, actually, their bond prices are actually going up right now. But, I mean, we can, we can, we can look for that. Right now, it's probably best if we look at that revolving fund for our projects than anything else.
Okay, let me ask this question if I word it properly. I've met with Kevin several times, it would, George has said, go for it. If we do a capital outlay project, let's say a small million dollars, whatever size you want, and we get a low incre, real low interest real loan, but we still have to pay it back with that low interest. To stay solvent, how's our best way to pay for that? Our only way to stay with it and stay solvent?
You gotta raise, you gotta find, let me just say this, you gotta find money.
Where?
And you gotta find money either through grants, which are not that often, or you gotta raise rates. Those are the only way to, to, to find the money.
Sell more water.
Sell more water.
Sell more water.
But the likelihood, see, the thing is, is our, our rates aren't so boisterous in the consumption side that it's really going to, to really give us that boost.
It's going to generate.
Yeah, I mean, it can, it can hurt us, but it's not going to really jump, jump us up forward so that we can just have this lucrative amount of money that we can go and, and, and create this capital projects.
Could we?
And it's not, and it's non-reliant either, remember. So if you go out and borrow, that's a steady payment every year. And if you're banking on that your consumption's going to pay for that steady payment every year, well.
Growth in consumption.
Yeah, here, that's, that's a recipe for disaster.
I think we've grown a total of less than three percent in the last fifteen years in the town.
We did what?
You're talking population?
World.
Population? Yeah.
World got what?
Three percent.
Less than three percent over fifteen years, not annually.
No.
Total.
Yeah. No, I'm not after, you know, everybody says they're paying all they can pay, you know, we hear this in the community all the time, rate-wise and all of that. But that's the only way we're going to stay solvent, is raising the rates as I see it on the service fee. Because that's the only thing guaranteed. In fact, I pay twenty-nine dollars, okay? Whatever it is, a little over twenty-nine dollars. That twenty-nine dollars is paying for all of the past debts. And we're still paying for the article that I shared with you people when they did such a different job on the one in nineteen eighty-five, okay?
Correct.
We're still paying on that. And then, all of our salaries is paid out of my twenty-nine dollar.
That's right.
Everybody else.
Fixed. If, go ahead.
Can we have, you guys love these special meetings, but we need to do something to prioritize these capital expenditures. The, the, this is not going to fly the way it is. It, it, irregardless, so we need to really look at them hard and as a board, say, okay, this is the one, these are the most important and so forth. And like Jim has a lot of things he wants to have us bring up to date, we've met with him twice and talked about the different projects. And the one I'm aware of is the one we just put a, okay, to see if we can borrow a half a million dollars on. But we're, that's also five years away supposedly. So, I'm going, we need to prioritize these. Sit down with George and Jim and maybe Keith or whatever, and talk about these things and prioritize them. We, otherwise, we're going to bust the bank, whether we increase rates or not, it's just not there. We don't have the ability. As a ten thousand.
That's for sure.
No, and as ten thousand customers that we're dealing with is, as far as I'm concerned, three percent can be a statistical error. The town is flat on growth, and we still have a lot of empty houses, even though, you know, from foreclosures and what have you. So, and on the Skyway and Clark, we have empty businesses, even though we're getting some new ones in where they're building new businesses. And this is not a good economic climate at all. So we've got to really set these up and make some priorities and decide what is more important and what we can do with the, if anything, with the state's thing. Their EPA just recently, for some farmers up in Washington, backed off some water quality standards because the farmers got together and met with EPA and took them out in the field and showed them what their problem was. And they decided they're going back to Washington and change those water quality standards because they're not sustainable for the farmers. And for this little district, our problem is not sustainable either. So I think we ought to work at trying to get some sort of exemption or anything we can, even if they say no. Otherwise, all I can see is we're going to break the bank.
Yeah, I mean, the, the matter of the fact is, to do capital, you gotta raise rates. That's, that's what this budget is all telling, telling everybody that's, that's reading it. To do capital, you gotta find money. And so, and that's.
If we do, on the schedule we have here, we're going to have to raise the rates tremendously.
Tremendously.
Yeah, okay. And then I'll be willing to bet on that one if we will have a couple of new directors in, coming up for reelection, me being one of them. And we might have a new manager and a new financial manager. We really have to show them that we're working hard on this and we can set priority. Politically, this thing isn't going to fly the way it is.
And, and that's where.
That's, that's why we're here. This is the budget process.
Right.
This list that you're seeing here, this capital summary, go back five years. These are the projects that were identified early on when I got here, long-term planning projects. The only thing that's really been added to this entire list.
Recycling water.
Is the recycle water project. The others were on there in that period of years where the board didn't want to raise rates. All of those kept getting shoved out further and further and further and further.
Well, maybe some of them need to be shoved out again further.
It's your guys' job to decide if you want to keep shoving them out further. But at some time, at some point in the future.
We could stop replacing pipeline right now.
We already have stopped replacing pipeline. Ninety feet is not replacing pipeline.
Yeah, but the reason we stopped is because we're down below ten percent. That's one of the reasons.
And remember, this was a board decision. We're doing this work ourselves because we're saving a half a million dollars in cash is our estimate, cash. This number would be a lot worse today had you made a different decision. Yes, we'd be moved in there if we hired a contractor, but your bottom-line reserves would be.
I'd like to see how we're saving five hundred thousand dollars.
Well.
On a piece of paper and figured out.
We're not saying we're saving, we're saving cash.
Understand what he's saying. It's a choice, and opportunity costs be listed next to it.
When George and I were talking, and I didn't solicit, he just mentioned that, and I can understand why. And as I mentioned, the director's comments, the concrete that I've seen observed up there, except for a few honeycombs in some of the walls, is professional. So I think everything that we're getting up there is very professional. In fact, I looked at one of the walls, and you could tell when they hang a little sheet rock how square it is, and they're very square. But anyway, on a timeline, I can see where that we've saved a lot of money. I'm not going to, you put the five hundred thousand on it, but you're going to have a pretty good figure on that, of cash.
Oh, must, I mean.
Cash flow, not the cost, even maybe the cost of materials.
Right.
Different on that.
The, the, the savings is, is money that you would be paying the contractor to do it, which I'm sure we have, we have an estimate of what the contractor would have charged.
When I came on, I think I mentioned this before.
Yeah, I just began from my.
I think I mentioned this before, as far as the time of the help with the pipeline and all that. When I first looked at what we were doing, you know, actually before I came on the board, I kind of figured, well, you're using the crew instead of maybe some layoffs, but to the advantage because in a hundred-inch range, they're not going to be out here laying a lot of pipe unless they have to, like the one that just blew. Is that not true? I mean, you kind of gear it for the weather out here. So I thought it was, in my idea, a good use of that to keep the guys working. And save the cash flow that you're talking about on that particular point. So it'd be interesting to find out what we have. Now, we're not going to be doing a lot of the work, but this landscape thing that we're looking at may be some help there too from other committees that we get it in, and it's all in on the bottom line on that. But the, the conservation committee's on some, and at least we'll have the community involved in it, you know, and we're just at the formative stages on that. Okay.
Well, I would like to say that I think what it gets around to is because we have Bill's opinion about we've got to stop spending. There are certain things we can't stop spending on. And I think the board has to stop its willy-nilly vacillation of saying, well, let's, let's not implement this rate increase right away. We'll put it off for six months, and then we'll do this, and we'll do that. That was just nothing more than a political statement to serve the, the people who want to, to ring the bell and say, I'm looking out for you, Mr. Customer. This is my opinion, of course. And I think when we see that rates need to be increased, we step up to the plate, regardless of whether it's going to make us look bad politically, regardless of the election year, and we say, we're going to raise rates because here's the, here's the math. Here's the facts. This is what we're doing. We can not replace the, the coatings in these, in these tanks. We cannot paint trucks. I remember when I first came on the board, Bill, it was a, it was a, it was a mantra of yours to get us new equipment and get those trucks painted because they look bad. We can run rusty old trucks, we can live in a rusty old building, we can just stop doing stuff now. We don't have to put plants up here. You know, that's kind of what you're saying, or we can have the district go ahead and continue to run. And when we want the district to run, and we want it to run for a long time without having major hiccups, then we do this. We plan out five years, we plan out ten years, we plan out how we're going to finance those things. And we aren't talking about creating a budget that'll come up with ten million dollars to pay for something. We're talking about creating a budget that will come up with a debt servicing plan for twenty years or thirty years to pay for that ten million dollars. And that's where we need to be able to go to our client, our, our customer base and say, we're raising rates. Here's the reason why. We'll have discussions, they can ask questions, we'll hopefully be able to convince them. And then we implement the rate structure and just move ahead.
As you're aware, because I kept it right on top of the table, I've met with Kevin several times, and for different options that they can do, or they being us. And as I have other treasurers and finance officers and other places I've been, and I came up with some good ones, and looking at the bottom line on this budget to keep us from going broke, everything that's on there, we're going to have to do. There's no doubt about it. One of the key things that we have, this water recycling, which is the big item, is mandated by the state, so we have to do it. But in my idea on the budget, and right up front, the only way I can vote yes on this, and a lot of this came from Kevin, is that we take the eight million dollars out of this year's budget temporarily, okay, or however you want to say it. We remove the eight million dollars and the debt service, okay? And that will give us, and then to keep that project going, we take two hundred and fifty, I raised you fifty thousand. Two hundred and fifty thousand out of the capacity fund for expenses that we need to do to keep that water recycling thing going, whether it's a wetland or Rogers plant or whatever it happens to be. And what that would do and would give us time to go for this rate raise. And we could then amend the budget by putting whatever it is back into it. And we'll have an idea of what kind of grants we're having at this particular time, and we'll really have it nailed down what rate increases we're going to have. Now, along with that, and I've got it down here, the capital outlay, we would still have the corporation yard for four hundred and fifty-five thousand, the tank redo, I got four hundred and fifty thousand on that.
Yeah, and that's a change, I made a change on that.
I noticed that. What did you change it to?
I changed it to twenty thousand dollars due to Jim's, he did a study on that, and I forgot to change it in the last iteration of the budget, that he felt like we can stretch those out for another two years. So I changed that, but also included in that budget, I had the A-zone, and I, A-zone.
Well, see, the thing that I'm wondering, you remember he brought before us, is one point six. Remember, Jim, I pointed you, but you brought up, we, we afforded the A-zone or whatever it was, it was one point six million, remember? Time or two back.
That's the additional pipeline.
Pipeline, and, you know, and you and Bill explained that to us, and I think it's outstanding. Now, one of the things I want to get right up in front with you persons and the taxpayers, it's very possible that out of the options that Rogers is going to present to the staff and then to us, the staffs might be the most expensive. And that would not keep me from voting for the staff the most expensive. Because what I do not want myself, this is me speaking, my personal opinion, Ken, to come up here and have like happened in that article that I gave you people, that we spend umpteen million dollars and it's short.
Short-term fix.
We need something that can last as twenty years or as far down the road as you can see. And maybe, Bill, it'll include some wetlands and all kinds of stuff.
Well, I.
And we need time to rassle that out. And then on down there, what the, there would be twenty-five thousand in this thing for the, my seat.
In canow.
The chlorine equipment, which we've already approved, right, Jim? The chlorine equipment, we've already approved it.
Yes.
We already approved that. And that's going to be out of this year's budget, isn't it?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so I got a hundred and seventy there.
Yep.
The, and you removed that to the account software, that's not.
Yeah, because we, we made, we made our final payment in the last budget year, so I removed that.
I came up with one point two mil.
Can you put that back to the screen that was Doug's revised?
That we would still have in the capital outlay funds, and it wouldn't stop anything we're doing now.
It's up, if you wanted.
Except this eight mil.
It's on, if you exit out of here.
Well, Doug, what I was trying to say is, why don't you make that in form of a motion? We'll find out where we are at as a board on that.
Let them see some numbers first. See, because what we would do is we would remove that eight mil.
Exactly.
Debt service.
So this is the changes.
All of the debt service.
That's correct. We would, we would, we would remove the debt service, basically, is what you do. And if you, this is the changes that I made to the, to the long-term capital. You can see, I took out the four fifty, like you said, I added in, because I had in, I, I kind of lumped together everything. So I just split out that cathodic, or the A-zone pump SCADA that we had for the last board meeting, that was at seventy-five. And then the distribution SCADA upgrade, which was the seventy thousand dollars. So I, I added that as a separate line item. And then I took out the accounting software for fifty thousand, and I took, and I added just, I left twenty thousand in for the steel tank repairs. That's just materials. So that's, those were the adjustments to the long-term capital that I made. But if you want to go back, now that we have that, if you want to see that iteration that you just talked about.
Yeah, I want to see the.
Do you want to go to the, this page?
It had a different, it had a different name.
Yeah. This is what the budget would look like removing that.
That eight mil plus debt service.
I don't think so.
Uh, it's page twenty-one.
This isn't it.
Of the original budget.
Oh, you're in the.
It said.
You're in the revised one.
There, right there, back up.
Go into the, now, go into the.
This is the one.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Processed water, yeah, this is it.
Yes, that's it. So, you're not going to see all the nuts and bolts of removing that. What you're going to look at is the bottom line, total operation and designated, the highlighted number of thir, one point three million dollars. That's what you would have if you removed this processed water recycle project out of this budget in the current year.
The bottom line down there, it's highlighted, it would be two point eight million.
Well, one point three is really.
But look up to the next one.
One point three oh five.
The next highlight. That's the number you really want to focus on.
That's the one you want to focus on.
Thirteen, the, the one point, one point three million dollars. That's what you would have in your designated.
Two point eight is including restricted.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
We would do, we would do this within the eye, now, that would not slow down anything that we got going out of the corporation yard or any of that stuff.
No, it would just.
We had a time problem with recycle.
No, but all he's saying, we're not going to, it's going to be a, a budget adjustment when all the numbers come in. So it'll still be in this year's budget.
He's leaving it out of the budget.
But it won't show in the original budget.
And, and what he's saying is, he wants to show, he doesn't want to just show just the expense. And and what he's saying is, he wants to show, he doesn't want to just show just the expense in this budget. He wants to go out and find ways to pay for it also and bring it as a package budget adjustment.
So, but, yeah, but see theoretically, unless we find those ways of doing it, we wouldn't buy, spend it.
Now, that's that's a board decision, but I would. Support that highly.
But I know for a fact that we've got to go out and find the money to get, whether it's the wetlands or Rogers or a mix in between, because we're mandated by the state. And I really truly believe that we can put together a program and sell that to the rate players, and I may be way off.
For clarification, is it state or federal government?
State.
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 The state's.
Yeah, but isn't that for the Sacramento or the Central Valley Water Control Board or something?
Yeah, that's the, that's the section we answer to, but there's a state that governs all of those individual.
Okay, this regulations for the whole state?
Yeah, this is a regional board.
That's who we have to deal with.
Have you heard any more about that violation?
And then if you look at your screen, what I want to highlight, if you do take that out, is now you have $650,000 after, net after expenses. Then now you have the opportunity to to have available to you to make capital decisions on. Because you're taking out that 521,000 of debt service. You don't have a decision. Once you make the decision, you can't, you have to pay it. So that really increases your bottom line net income before capital expenses from a budgeting standpoint.
The budget, I don't, I was not quite understand, George. The budget, the 2013, 2014 budget would not show that 8 million in debt service. That would not be shown.
No, if you guys make the decision to to pull that out, then all that would be pulled out.
He's suggesting you pull it from this current budget you're considering. And when we get final numbers, then we'll present it as a budget amendment.
That's exactly what I'm presenting.
Plug it in exactly as the parameters on the project you picked and the financing we find.
Account, we, well, one of the things.
Is you, the budget is a tool for the board, but it's also a tool for the public to know what you're facing. And when you pull it out.
They don't see it.
They don't know that we're facing it.
I don't see any problem. Why don't we just go ahead and budget for the debt servicing?
Well, that's what's in here.
That's what's in.
No. You're, have you budgeted for the? Okay, you budgeted for the influx of capital.
And we budgeted for a debt service associated with the influx of capital.
Okay.
They have the revenue.
The influx of capital in here.
The new debt service?
521.
Is the influx of capital in here?
Yes. The capital, not, but what are you talking? Are you talking revenue?
Yes, he's talking revenue.
I'm, yeah, I'm talking income. You go out and borrow the money.
Okay, because I, that's, I'm just getting at our terminology, right?
Saying he doesn't want to have just the expense shown, so he doesn't want to budget it. I'm saying.
I've I've never, I have not budgeted other than I've shown an example of what that budget would look like with the influx of income.
Yes.
But I have not budgeted that income in there based on the fact that there is a process that the board must go through to have that influx of income.
And there's the process we must go through to have all those expenses too. We aren't going to spend that money if we don't get the loan.
That's true.
So we approve, budget the expenses, budget the loan.
If we if we approve this budget with that 8 million in there, then we're approving to go ahead and spend it.
That's that's not, that's not how we've done in the past.
No, there, no, we're not. No, but it's a pretty weird project. I would recommend that if you want to do that, then you have a caveat statement that says, we've assumed revenue equal to debt service in order to make sure the public sees that this project is in our budget.
Yeah, and that way it's still all visible.
How it will be paid for will be determined through the proper Prop 218 process.
So we could amend the budget later. Leave it in, is what you're saying.
We wouldn't have to amend it later.
Leave it now. We don't have to amend it later because we've already covered it.
But you're supposed to amend.
That's why I want to pull it out.
Well, okay, I was going to say to satisfy Doug more over is that to achieve what he wants, actually, I don't want to say satisfied, but to achieve what he's looking for, so we can show the public, we could then budget now, put actual numbers in later on.
You would, well, what 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 Ken is saying is, you budget the debt service, you budget the project in there. And you also budget the revenue source to pay for that project in there. So everything, and when, what what the budget would look like would be actually this page. Page, what is this, page 21 right here? As you can tell, I have in here, if you look at your screen.
You gave us printers, printers copies of that too, for anybody.
Well, you have, uh, yeah, do you want me to go burn a copy right now? Okay, okay, good.
You gave us page 21, so all we have.
So if you look at page 21.
There you go.
You look up at the top. I don't know if they, uh, you look up at the top, you have revenue increase of 521. You have debt service, new debt service.
So everybody knows, we're looking at 2014 budget, color, skin color.
Of 521. And that's what our budget would look like if we did what Ken's suggesting. It would be just like this. If our, if we, okay, and but let me say, if we did what Doug wanted, you would not see this 521 in that budget. This capital prod, this debt proceeds would be gone and this capital project budget would be down $8 million. But your bottom line would be exactly the same.
Right.
Yes.
So all I'm saying is, make it visible.
It's a, it's a, it's a presentation thing, exactly. So, but discuss within yourselves.
I think Doug's concerned that if we make it visible, that means we've, that that we're spending it.
Right.
It is not, just like if we budget to spend $50,000 on a new truck. And for whatever reason, during the course of the year, you guys come around to wanting to get approval to purchase this truck and you tell us it's in the budget, and we say, yeah, but we aren't going to approve it now because we've had these other issues and we're not going to sign off on spending that $50,000 for the budgeted truck. That's the board's.
Most definitely.
Realm of responsibility and decision-making.
That's how, that's how our process works.
Before we bought it.
Okay, this.
We had a truck in there for two years that John wanted and we didn't buy it until the truck was.
The third option is to take the $8 million project and shift it in the next year's.
1415?
1415 budget, because in the 1314 budget, all you'd have to do is budget for the design process. Because you're not really going to borrow the 8 million or spend the 8 million by June 30th of next year.
Well, correct, only if you borrow, if you borrow the 6.5, you're going to get all the 6.5 and you're going to pay debt service on the 6.5.
We don't have an engineering report yet.
But that's, that's the process.
Well, that's what they're saying. We don't have to put that in there, so that.
No, no, all I'm saying is, we don't have an engineering report even on the three choices we've been given of yet on what the final is. And we probably won't have it for another 90 days or something. So we really don't know if it's going to be 9.5 million or something else.
We always try to budget for worst case.
So.
Just what we do.
Yeah, I understand that, but if we pull it out and push it, like Kevin or you, Georgia suggested, then it's still in here. We're still looking at it. But it gives us the the time lapse to go, because when we actually come up with the the closest estimate we can get to what's going on, the one, if we have to make that choice, I'm hoping we don't, but if we have to make that choice, then we can come up with the best choice based off the engineer's design and estimates.
Fine with me.
Is, uh, the only thing, my concern is, is that the longer we wait to borrow the money, the more it's going to cost us.
Well, that's, that's crystal ball.
I know, I know.
Well, we're not saying it's going to change our process at all.
Yeah. It's just that, I mean, you don't want to defer it to save money, because you could lose money. That's what I was saying.
We've got the project underway, under consideration. We just don't have to budget the bulk of it until 2015. 1415.
Then, then we will have a better idea of the rate increase. Because going back to, like Kevin was saying, and I can see that, the only way we're going to be able to pay for it and stay somewhat solvent is a rate increase.
Most definitely.
Whichever we go wetlands or whatever it happens to be. But one of the things I was not trying to do by pulling it out, I was just trying to make this more palatable and not give us, you know, because like you folks, I've been working with budgets a long time myself, would be that the public, Trevor, we're going to have to do this project. It's just a mandated thing, you know? And maybe for the proper part of it, if Dust was here, we're going to be saving 600 to 800 acre feet of water was the last time you estimated. And that's a lot of water. And at $300 an acre foot or whatever it is for that P G D water, that's pretty significant.
This also gives the community relations committee a chance to put together a program where we introduce this thing. It's already in the last mailer, the first mailer we've had with the new bill, it's mentioned in there. So we mention it again and again, and we keep them informed and they know what we're doing. Even explaining this process a little bit to them and saying, okay, we're looking after your funds, but this is made in mandated by the state of California and put in specifically what the problem is. Again, we just have to have the most informed people in the district.
Right.
And to make this thing go. It can't be.
See, and if we if we approve it from some of the other happenings that I've had in other budgets and nothing to do with B I A D, people are going to say, well, you've already spent that 8 million bucks.
Mm-hmm.
You see? And that's what I'm saying. If we take it out of there, they can't say that. But I've already had people talking to me, and I'm speaking just as a board member, okay, just as a board member, an individual, is that I can see where that we are going to have to put together this water recycling. Because the state's mandating, and maybe it's not that bad if you look at the 600 acre feet that we're going to be saving over eons of time, you know? But one of the things that I've also been saying just in conversation, I don't want to do something that will come back and bite us. And I haven't always talked to other new people than the 1 in 85 that we're still paying for. You know, and we're paying big time for the 1 in 93 or whatever it was.
That's.
Big time, and it will be for quite a while longer. It's all in here. But anyway, you see where I'm coming from.
We need to pick a project that's expandable throughout time, not a one-time fix and then a throwaway.
Oh, that's what we've got to do.
Yeah, we've got to have a long-time, expandable project.
As far as you can see in the future, you know, with the breast brains, and we've got some of them right here, sitting back in the corner there.
So I I can definitely move that project into next budget year. Wouldn't the board like to see an increase in revenue in the next budget year projection also?
This board member would.
I would, yes.
Our rate increases.
Because if we think that we're going to have to have that, then we should give some type of a of a projection of what we would be looking for. It would be perhaps more fair to the public to say, we are therefore looking for a rate increase of such and such. And still yet with the caveat that this has to go through the 218 process and be approved.
That's what I was pointing here, the 218.
Say what?
You still have your little Excel program going that we, Ken and I used when we did the last, went through the last rate increase that basically we can change. Kevin's got a great program, Doug, that, and we all saw it, that he can just put in, if we do 3% or 4%, whatever we do.
He was going to upgrade the Lotus, but he didn't.
Yeah, he didn't go to the Lotus, but basically it would, it will show where our total operational and designated cash will end up.
Right.
Right.
Those next 45 years out.
I'll put in all this, I'll put in some type of rate increase impact.
He gave me one of those.
Language associated with.
What's the date of our last approval, approved rate increase?
January 1st.
It's this one, isn't it?
January 2013.
14. That's the last one on the three-year, correct?
We, we can, we can use your billing flyer to to present this separately from the budget also and it to make sure that the public understands or at least has the opportunity to understand. I don't know how many people actually read these budgets. I haven't been forced to read it, so I I read it. Otherwise, I wouldn't do it. Oh, yeah, that's.
It's eye-opener stuff. 10 o'clock at night, laying in bed.
Trying to make sense of it.
Out by 10:02.
Yeah, right.
People must be reading their billing inserts because the bus is full for our tour.
It is. How nice.
We've been outpounding the tour.
So it's working, so direct mail.
But are we currently counting, talking about all of our ideas, but out of this, for if we run the 8 million over into, wouldn't we also do the debt service in that particular time for the 8 million?
Most definitely, yeah.
Program that I asked him to.
Push it over. We'll push it over to the to the next budget year. Right, so you'll see, you'll, it's actually 1415, right? Because we're in 1314.
See, any budget with increased.
You're going to see it just like this.
Yes.
A revenue increase, a debt service increase in the project, but it'll be over here.
Yep, so the project will move over one.
15.
Debt service will move over one and revenue increase will move over one.
But for this year's budget, we wouldn't, that would be in, this bear's budget, we would.
You will not see it.
Whatever we had down here.
The bottom lines would remain the same if you're not going to project any rate increases in future years.
The bottom line, yes. The bottom line for the next.
Going to project rate increases for future years there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we were talking about.
Well, the rate increase associated with paying for that project.
Correct.
Yes.
And that would be off of some of this type of a form.
That that that'll be the information that'll be given. Rate increase impact will be something off of that form. And then the the rate increase will be flat based on debt service.
You know, as soon, I don't have, have never gone through the 218 process that you people have. But I would think as soon as we're knowledgeable enough on it to talk, other than saying that we're going to have to do it, I think that we better start talking immediately to the public, how, and at least plan out how we're going to do it.
Well, that's, again, that's the direct mailer that we're doing with the bill.
That is a very effective.
Very effective, so we'll, we do it there in stages so that they get it. And that will keep my politics down to a roar, because they'll be informed.
Mild roar.
Mild roar, yeah.
But then also, it doesn't look like we're trying to keep anything away from the public.
No, we're not hiding anything at the same time.
We're keeping it up where they're out there.
Yeah.
Okay, I buy that.
Okay. That that will be an adjustment to the draft budget that will be in there when the final budget comes out.
Well, do we, when the final budget comes out, that's when we vote on it? We don't vote on it now?
You can vote on it now with the amendments that you have given direction to me on, but it's up to you guys.
Or we can continue talking tonight, continue to get your input and see the final numbers, final budget at the September board meeting and.
What's our, what's our last drop dead date?
Around, like, October 1st, maybe a little before that, but we would still be within our area of time in that September board meeting.
Okay.
So it's 90 days, so.
90 days, so it's at the end of September.
It's like at the end of September.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure. I mean, we had, you know, two directors not be here.
It's the end of September.
Then we'd have to call a special meeting before we ran out. But if you had two two directors, you could still.
Do we need to continue it into the September meeting?
With two directors, you could pass the meeting.
I'm giving that as an option.
Two directors not.
Is there any reason why?
If you wanted to.
More comfortable seeing the final numbers based on your input tonight before you approve it, that's why.
As long as we can keep it to a short, I mean.
As long as we don't have a bazillion amendments.
Continue going through the other questions.
I don't want to see a bazillion, otherwise we're going to stay here tonight.
Tonight's about answering all the questions. All you'd be seeing is how final numbers are.
Wound up.
Shouldn't result in new questions.
And you'd get that in plenty of time to go through it on your own.
If those figures, as I understand, they're going to be over there in the 15 column and and all of that, I could vote yes on it right now.
Okay.
Because I have pursued the budget, and I really don't know, understand it, because after I go through.
There's some wordage I would like to change in the the letter it goes out, the the beginning of the budget that that I think should be changed.
So are we, we're getting to look for the nitty-gritty things now?
Yeah, this is a nitty-gritty, page seven.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, this is things I I have.
This could be a problem here.
Yeah, this can be a problem.
Uh, page seven of the budget?
Yeah, budget page seven. George in here on the second paragraph, the last sentence. The board of directors, similar to board of directors for a corporation, works through general managers similar to chief exec, executive officer of a corporation, ensure the district operation in a businesslike manner. We're we're not a corporation or we shouldn't be compared with private business. This is a public agency. It's a special district. It's not supposed to make a profit. So I, you know, we're like an NCO, but we're not an NCO.
But, well, this is, that language has been in the budget for quite a few years and it was put in there because the board at that time liked. was put in there because the board, at that time, liked to say, we operate like a business.
Yeah.
But if that's the purpose of the board.
Any rate, I, I have a problem with it. I don't think, probably this is the first time I've bothered to read it. Any rate, that's my comment on that one.
Well, I, I need a decision based on the majority of the board, if that's something they'd like to change.
Because it's people, people don't understand special districts as much as they other businesses, so therefore, we're showing how, how much we're like them. We're not them, but we are.
I, I, actually, Bill, I thought it, it helped the public to, to further understand the way we operate.
It says right at the top, although we are a not-for-profit government organization, now we're just gonna show you what we're compared to.
Oh, okay.
It says right up there, not-for-profit.
I made my ejection, and I gather it doesn't carry, so I'll go on to something else. National water rate comparison. I, I would rather it be for.
Page, Bill?
On page nine.
Thank you.
Uh, I would rather it be for rates compared with other water districts in the, in our area, in North, in Sacramento Valley, Northern California. I don't think this is really of any value, because you're having, you're having national figures, which you could have urban water, urban water districts and all the rest in it.
This is a, this is the introductory section, kind of talking in general terms. If you go to page twenty-nine.
Yeah, because I know we've got those in there somewhere.
Twenty-nine.
You'll see.
Twenty-nine has service charges and quantity charges.
Okay.
Such current rates.
My numbering got screwed up on, and Georgiana found this on my original, so it could be.
Right here, it's, uh.
Twenty-seven?
Thirty, page twenty-nine printed, page thirty-three, I probably iPad page thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay. Agency property, facility capacity rates.
Okay, you need to go backwards. Go backwards.
Go to twenty-nine.
No, he needs to go to twenty-seven, I bet you on that one.
I don't know what page.
Twenty-seven?
I've got my old iPad here.
It's.
My number section is actually very early back to very. So this is the graph we're looking.
Yeah, okay. I have the same comment here, because you're comparing us to Las Vegas, Fort Worth, Houston, Austin, you know, Boston, Philadelphia, Indianapolis, and I'm going, whoa, we're just a little district, ten thousand-member district in Butte County, and we should be comparing these rates based on what other districts around us are charging. There's a, or what Cal Water's charging.
Bottom left.
Bar chart.
So I have a national water rate comparison, and then a local water rate comparison.
Local, okay. Well, then, and my, my thing is, we take out this, the big bar graph, and take the line thing and put it in its place, because that compares with the local districts, Del Oro, Cal Water. That, I think that's important, and that's pertinent to our customers. This other one, I don't think's pertinent to anybody, certainly not our customers.
Can you enlarge the, the small graph?
The small graph to replace the, replace the big graph.
Make the big graph.
Make the big graph.
Put it down in there.
Well, yeah, I'll put it down there or get rid of it, one of the two.
Well, I like it being in there. I just thought it was interesting for people just to get a feel for things around the country.
Yeah, but we.
And they are, uh, large cities. That was the biggest problem that I had with looking at those up there. Uh, I don't think there's any small cities up there.
No, none. They're all large, major, yeah, so to me.
But I just thought it was interesting for, for looking around what's going on in the country.
Well, it might be good for realtors, uh, any, there are people coming from the Bay Area or what have you, but the local water rate comparison is really what we're about. And, and the same way with the water rate increase comparison, that's local districts. Those two down below that are small and hard to read should be replacing the one up above, and if you keep that one up above, then make it small down below. I just think it's more important, because we deal with people that are, well, George has his water in Del Oro and so forth, so.
Yeah, I got the burp line.
Are you live-sattled or?
I got the burp line, yeah.
I'm in the burp line.
You went off the graph at one point.
So.
The one, the one that goes off the graph?
Yep, that one.
So is that a hard task to do? Is that a complete rework of this page?
I'm just looking for consensus.
Yep, no, that's, that's, it's an easy fix. Just moving graphs up and down is not a problem, so.
I think that, I think that's a good idea, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
To focus more in on locals.
Put those two on top and the other one on the bottom.
Uh, but I'd keep the, keep that guy in there. You might even, even, Kevin, if you can, uh, take these two bottom graphs, instead of putting three graphs on a page, just go ahead and, and move, you know, the local page, and then maybe, I don't know if you have room to slip in another page, back page, uh, that's problem, okay, okay.
That's what causes the problem.
That's where my page numbers go.
Page numbers.
Screwball on me.
So if you could, if you could do that to the, the next page.
We'll make it work, though.
Make these two guys bigger and that.
We will. Increase and all.
And the pages smaller.
Make these smaller. Yep, that's not a problem.
That sound good, Bill?
Yeah, that's fine.
Make those two half the page, half the top and bottom, and move this graph to another page.
Everything else I have in here.
It's gonna be smaller down below.
Was covered at the meeting last week. No other questions?
Can I log in?
So that's, that was into my questions.
I got a lot of room there. Then you won't screw up your page numbering.
That's right, please don't do that.
And fortunately, before the meeting last week, I, I called Kevin and gave him all my stuff over the phone, so I don't need to bore us and slow us down by looking for typos and things.
I do, a commission, committee meeting.
That's right.
Yeah, the committee meeting I missed.
You didn't miss.
Well, I can't spell very well, so I stick to the broad line things. Otherwise, I have to get a dictionary on.
You got any changes, Doug? Any changes? Wording, typos? Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't see.
Page numbering?
Yeah, the, the page numbering is fixed, finally.
I want the numbers all changed. One of the things.
Could you, I have something to cover.
You want, you, you've got something you're gonna cover? Salaries and stuff, or what?
Yeah, I wanna have a discussion about, um, the two utility worker positions that are assumed to be frozen in the budget.
Okay.
Um, that was an option that was presented to the finance committee. At this stage of the game, I, I think we could use the people, um, but it's, it just, it was an opportunity where they aren't filled, that you have at this particular time to make a decision whether to keep them frozen or not. Um, and so I just wanna see what the full board's.
Well, George, I have to agree with you again. I was sort of upset seeing the two frozen positions, so I think we need to crew, you know?
And by the time we actually fly them.
Yeah, you mark it.
If you bring them on board, you're probably looking at about a six-month impact from the budget standpoint. A little over six.
Why, the two positions was a hundred and thirty?
Hundred and thirty thousand.
I remember seeing it here, but I can't.
What are we missing by not having them? What are we not doing by not having them?
What are we not doing? We are not, we're, we're scrambling people around in the field. We continue to. We now have a group that we got a few years under their belt, so we're, I think we're comfortable bringing on a couple new people to get them trained and, and moving forward. So it's just a mix of things, the filling full.
Do we?
Full case capabilities.
Do we work any overtime?
That's exactly.
Yeah, there's overtime.
Yes, we've actually been, the Skyway projects, the guys have been, Austin Extra Time, Clark Project, uh, they've been doing overtime. So it's more frequent in the last six months.
So is it safe to assume we could maybe cut some of that down?
So it would eliminate some of that, then?
Might.
Might.
Well, it's.
Once they get up to speed.
Acumened.
It's not gonna happen overnight.
So what, so what is it if we do it, if they're in there?
A hundred and thirty thou.
Well, if we do a six-month impact, it would be about sixty thousand.
Sixty, and where, so that, what does that, what's that lower our profit to?
I've personally seen crews working at night on Clark to get that done for the highway, and then the crews on Skyway working six, seven o'clock at night, and then going into the yard and finding that we've got the carpenter and a helper and nobody there from P I D, because they're out fixing things that they have to do otherwise, so they're, even though I disagree on this program, if we're gonna get the yard done, we need those people to, where they can be rotated into the yard or the ones that have skills there, if we're gonna get it done. Because I don't think it's gonna be ready by your bus tour time right now. Maybe something will change, but, so, any rate.
What's the board's?
I think I may have not brought this to your attention, Kevin. Uh, page thirty-five of the budget, it may be off, it's your verbiage, your narrative on the operating budget.
Okay.
Is that the real page thirty-five?
Yeah, well, it used to be. Uh, last week it was. I don't know what it is now.
Operating budget?
It's now thirty-seven, apparently.
Thirty-seven?
Oh, mine says thirty-five, but I don't.
Thirty-seven.
What, what's wrong?
Yeah, oh, well, nothing's wrong. I just wanted to suggest some clarification. Because of the English language, the way it reads, if you say, "The district's retirement plan is different than most California state government plan, uh, retirement plans." These plans are called a defined benefit plan. I wanna make sure that we let our people who are reading this, uh, know that when we just use that word "these," we're not referring to ours, we're referring to those, or we're referring to other state plans are called a.
Other plans?
Yes.
Instead of these, those, other?
I, I just wanna make sure that we make sure that we're the good guys, and those other guys are the bad guys, and make sure that they know that.
Good catch, though.
That those plans, uh, those other bad dudes have this problem, and we don't.
Okay.
So one of us does find this good reading.
So say "our" plan?
And Ken, that could be one of the down the road.
So instead of these, say ours.
Things we put in the bill.
Instead of saying these, say ours. Is that what you wanna do?
Taking care of the retirement. Lots of good uses for that.
This one's referring to the other ones.
These plans are called defined benefit plans. Ours are not called defined. Both of the states are, oh, okay.
Fine contribution.
Okay, so their, their plans, instead of these?
Those, those other.
Other state plans are such and such. That way it's real clear.
Okay.
So back to George's request for the two positions. Did we arrive on something there? It seemed like we kinda jumped.
Oh, sorry, George.
No, it's okay.
Do you want to include the other, the two utility people?
I would like to see us back up to workforce.
So budget, them into the budget. I'll budget them for a half, half year.
Well, getting back to the page thirty-five, and I, I remember reading about this. It seems like to me that seventy percent for salaries and benefits is very nice. I have thought of, you know, most, well, a lot of organizations, public, public, in particular, you're looking at eighty-five percent.
Oh, yeah, no, very much so.
You know, and so that seventy is good, but then we have forty-four full-time employees and six seasonal. I know one of them is a day, a late tenter, this part-time late tenterer. Where are the others? Just here during the peak season?
Just temp workers.
And we'll be bringing two of those.
Instruction out here.
Yeah, we'll be bringing two of those back.
Two, no, we're gonna have two permanents.
Two more permanent. So we would have forty-six permanent.
Yeah, when the, when the yard's done, the two employees, the carpenter and his assistant, will be, they're gone, so.
They're not employees. You know, unless, of course, unless you give C T O time, we've never talked about this. Take like the leak down there off of Pearson Road at two o'clock Sunday morning. You almost have to pay overtime for that.
Oh, it's, it's the employee's choice.
Employee's choice, okay. They could either take overtime or C T O, okay, well, that's good. But either, either way, it's overtime.
Yeah, it's time and a half, either way.
Time and a half, yeah.
C T O.
They, they bank.
Compensating time off, time and a half, hour and a half for every hour.
Okay, yeah, because it was on a Sunday morning, or a holiday, or, yeah.
And then if they have a, if they bank a lot, they can actually sell it, or just cash it out, is what.
You know, you can't expect someone to come in, uh, ho, heartily like those guys did, I know whoever it was, go at something like that unless they're being compensated. Just isn't the card.
Oh, I can expect them to do it.
So.
Just for six months.
George wants two new utility workers. Yay, nay?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I think we should go ahead and just.
Because so that'll be another revision to the budget.
Yep.
Because right now, we're showing them frozen.
And, and my devious reasoning is not really devious, but once again, this is transparency, transparency, and if we're gonna be talking about rate increases, let's have all of our costs shown. You know, we go from one year where we're squeezing it down like we did several years ago, or two or three years ago. We had all these frozen positions, and then the next year, when we bump way up, people say, why are your salaries? Or what, what happened to you guys? Look at all these salary increases. And so we get no positive accolades for what we do in trying to minimize the expenses there in the first place. And since we are going to be going into an era of talking about, I'm sure committees will be formed at, at some time here soon, um, well, probably after the beginning of the first, after the first of the year, but we'll have to start thinking about planning this whole two eighteen process, because it doesn't, it take us about six months to get through all of that?
The one I have at long time.
Uh, it can take, you can get it done in three to four.
Yeah.
So it's.
But we would need to have it on a ballot.
Three to six months.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
I think it took us six months last time with all the committees, and then finally, once we got it established.
What are the other?
If they make it, it depends. It could be pretty quick if you make a focused increase on just one project, but if you wanna look at the whole global impacts going down the road, then it takes more time for staff to.
Yeah.
Help the committee, whoever you pick, prep for that.
Yeah.
You know, another thing, looking at it, when we dialogue, you get more detail. But a lot of these capital outlay projects, even though it may not be happening anywhere, but that one point six, Jim was talking about, we need to, we need to figure out all the, as far as we can see, rate increases, figure out how to implement those, what we're doing. Don't take.
That's, that's.
Instead of coming back, instead of coming back every year for another one.
Yeah, to, to package multiple projects into one rate increase is another option.
Even though some of them may be at five years.
A five-year, right, capital project.
What it should show the public, and I've been able to see that, Trevor, since I've been on this, they are looking as far down the road as they can for those kind of projects. They, they really are. And staff like George and Jim and Kevin are really making that They really are. And staff like George and Jim and Kevin are really making that happen. And in the water treatment area, I'm going to point at Jim over there, is really looking down the road, which is good.
Kevin, there were some, another suggestion I'll give you in regard to the budget. And I think, remember I told you I was going to come down here and give you some pages? I never gave you those pages. That's what I'm realizing now. But like on, you've used initials in here quite often. I mean, I remember one section early on in the budget, and now that I'm looking back here at budget page fifty-eight, which is maybe about fifty-nine or sixty now. It's long-term goals for customer service.
Yeah.
Major accomplishments for customer service, major goals for customer service. The casual person reading this, our clients, may be looking at an A M R and not, or a G I S and not know what the heck it is. It's going to take a little bit more space, but once you have it spelled out, I think that the public can understand.
And if you clarify it in the first paragraph of that section, so A M R Automated Metering System, then when you go down, you can leave it.
Maybe, but just don't, but don't do it from one section to another.
Right.
Okay.
Because I remember reading this earlier and I go, okay. And then when I got back here, just bam, 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 all these things. And I thought, well, what if they really don't know? And they look at this and they're trying to figure out what it is. And automated meter reading would just focus that in. And then like George says, in the same section, yeah.
Got it.
What does F Y M mean?
Fiscal year, right?
I know.
Some people don't know what it means.
It's a for your...
Fiscal year.
For your information. We just left off the eye.
Right.
Also, in this thirteen fourteen budget, and maybe it's not enough to even worry about, but I know Kevin and I talked about some other options. And we were talking about keeping the recycling onboard and some of this other stuff where we put two hundred and fifty dollars out of the...
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
No. Okay, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand. No, I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know where we come up with that. I did have all those zeros behind that. Two hundred thousand. Was it two hundred thousand we were talking about? Bring it out of the capacity fees because it was two hundred thousand.
Right, keep it, keep it for the design portion.
For the design, that's it.
Stay in this fiscal year.
Yeah, and that will stay in this fiscal year, but it won't affect that designated...
Won't affect that?
That designated operational cash because it'll be coming out of the capacity fees.
In other words, you're going to put in two hundred thousand...
Right.
To come out of that one point three six, one point...
One point six, correct.
Because it is going after capacity fees. So that's going to save two hundred thousand out of the general fund.
Correct. Out of the designated operational cash, correct.
Is that, were we planning on putting that in or was it just, since I brought up your suggestion?
No, we were planning on putting it in. Okay. We were going to leave that cushion because you've already approved that project, so we have to budget that project.
See, that would still leave one point one million.
Forklift and you moved over that way.
Right. In that fund.
In that designated fund.
Right.
But it would, it would free up two hundred thousand for research and development of plans. And so that would make it...
Yeah, it would leave one point four in the capacity fees because we'd be taking two hundred. Yes, I know, interesting.
Evaluate a roundup program?
We'll do that.
And that's going to be in there. So it leaves still one point four.
Correct.
And it's a real bona fiable use of that money.
Correct.
That's what it's for.
That's what Dustin told us.
Dustin told us that, didn't he?
Page sixty, I noticed the second line from the bottom. I'm sorry, I'm in agriculture. Evaluate a roundup program. I'm going, you're going to spray something for weeds? So what's a roundup program?
If you remember, we were talking with Salvation Army about how to round up ability to collect funds for people that are having trouble meeting their water bills.
I'll clarify that better, though. It should be calling evaluated billing roundup.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Round up your bill donation.
Okay.
Or a rodeo is going to start.
Rodeo is better.
No. I'm sorry, you don't have...
Sounds like a lot of programs.
Lot of bull to me. Ken, any sense at all?
It's kind of late in the day, but it's only, it's page seventy-four, I think. It's repair and replacement projects.
Uh-huh, yep.
Yeah, that one. Oh, okay. It says move outhouses at Paradise Lake, third from the bottom. Was it truly just to move the outhouses at seventeen thousand dollars in expense?
That's, that's the new outhouse that we built at Paradise Lake. As far as I'm concerned, we could leave them where they're at.
In this year's fiscal budget, though.
Finishing it.
That hasn't been done yet.
We haven't built it.
Anything about, this is a carryover from past, remember it took three meetings to decide that you wanted the Cadillac toilet?
We went, how many hours did we spend on that thing? About four hours or something?
But these things still aren't done? They're, they're haunting us this fiscal year?
They're just the portables in there now.
Yeah, the portables come out and a permanent head goes in. The portable get moved across the lake.
We moved the portable.
Cinder block building.
So we had a little more pressing projects than finalizing the new constructed toilets.
Okay.
That's what I...
Thank you.
Well, I told him it wasn't just a matter of probably moving them, but it was something. I had boat launch two.
That was kind of what that...
I had boat launch two in my head, but I forgot we were still going to build the cinder block or whatever it is.
Yeah.
You might put new and move houses at Paradise Lake. It'd make more sense.
Upgrade.
Yeah.
Upgraded house.
Upgrade, yeah. Upgrade something. It isn't just moving them, that's for sure.
Okay, is there anything else anybody wants to add to the budget? The way it stands, they've taken complete notes, I'm sure. And so we are going to see a revised budget.
Or we could entertain a motion. I move we approve the budget as we have given direction for the recent changes.
Second.
Okay.
It'll be interesting, boys.
We'll monitor.
We don't trust them, we ought to get rid of them.
We'll monitor.
Get it.
You know, we're either going to see the changes we did or...
You guys will all get a final budget.
We change Kevin.
Now, the final budget will...
We'll change more than the budget change there.
Would this be approving the final budget? This would be approving the final budget?
Yes.
But we would look at it.
We'll still see it.
As we've given him direction, yeah. And then we'll all get copies of it. And if we don't like it, we go talk to Kevin about it.
If you don't like it.
We'll talk about it here, too.
We'll amend it.
We'll have another meeting.
You can always amend it.
That's exactly right. We'd put it on the agenda to fix it if we see something like that.
So let's get them going. Let's have a roll call vote, please, Georgiana.
Director Fleischer?
Yes.
Director Hood?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
President Crowell?
Yes. Pass is five zero.
Harmony.
I was going to throw the nay out there, you know, just to be different, you know, in the, in the spirit of direct, in the spirit of Director Hunt.
Make the motion, we go home.
Anything else you need to talk to us about?
Director's comments.
Yeah, we have to do director.
Okay, I just want to make sure there was nothing George had to do.
Nope.
Director's comments. Director Fleischer.
I thought everything went very smooth. I'll ask us to see the final one, and I'm sure it'll be just exactly like we talked about here. Tom, well, please.
No comment. Director Duncan?
Yes. I think we got, need to do something on our billing. I got a bill the other day and it said due September fourteenth. And so to me, that means if I pay it by the fourteenth, I won't be getting a penalty. But I think that I would.
I don't think so.
Because it's, because it was the second I owed a month before.
Well, let's try it out. Pay on the fifteenth, let's see what happens.
No, I paid it today.
That's based on your current...
I know, but what I'm saying is...
But we're changing that, actually. We're, we're going to say that it's due upon receipt and that penalties will be, and then there's going to be a...
Well, can't we do, can't we actually give them the due date?
The due date will be removed and it'll say due upon receipt.
I know, but why can't we just?
Due upon receipt, hey? That's worse than a due date.
I know it is.
It really gets confusing because the people that wait two months, then they only really do the first month. And to be able to figure out what that number is every time, that's, that's a mess.
Well, I pay it, I just pay them every two months.
Right.
Well, then you'll know you'll have two bills.
Well, I know, but I, but I know there's a possibility because of sometimes with, when it's read versus when I receive it, that the fifty days might be up on the first bill.
Right, because the fifty days from the read date.
Right. So that, I think that's wrong to do that to our customers.
The due on receipt doesn't sound any better.